All right, without further ado, I'm going to officially open the December 2nd Planning Board meeting at Town of Southampton. All members are present this evening, thank you very much. It's also being recorded on Charter Channel 191. And our first order of business is an A and R that Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys is here for, and he's representing Tom Wmet for 22 to 24 Pleasant Street. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but you're also seeking an address change on this as well?
Correct. When we compared the plan, we found that the existing house has been using 24, and they should have been using 22, because that parcel of land is only earmarked for 22 and 24 Pleasant Street. So if you were to leave the existing house at 24, it would not go in sequential order for street numbering.
So you're gonna flip them then?
Have to get changed to 22, and the new lot to 24, and I can show you that. I'll share the plan with you. So Tom Wmet owns this parcel of land which is located on the easterly side of Pleasant Street. It's approximately a quarter of a mile down from East Street, heading towards East Hampton on Pleasant Street on the right-hand side if you're heading down Pleasant Street. So I can zoom in on his existing house. He has an existing house which currently is noted as 24 Pleasant Street. He is creating a parcel of land which contains 60,001 square foot, as shown on the plan, and then the remain, and called Parcel B. And then the remainder portion of his property is noted as Parcel A, and it's got 7.168 acres of land. And kinda hourglasses back to being skinny in the back of the property. He's, he's going to build a new house for himself, downsizing from this house into a smaller house which is about right in this area here where my cursor is now. So the lot has been perk tested and passed the perk test through the Board of Health. The other thing that you'll notice on the plan is there's a, there's an existing path that he's been using for many years that comes through this yard area back to this area. The plan shows an easement, an access, an utility easement over this existing path, and he would like to use that as his driveway access to his new house. In fact, his son and daughter-in-law are going to acquire the existing house on Parcel B, and he's gonna build a new house for himself. So the parcel is gonna stay in the Wmet family, both parcels.
So what's the reason for not creating a new driveway on the new lot, Mark?
Excuse me. There are some wetlands over in this section of the property that come down. There's a finger of wetlands, so that when we prepare the plan, we will be filing with the Conservation Commission for a permit in order to build the house, because the house would be in the 100-foot buffer zone in a portion of the driveway.
So that means too, that that right-of-way, if he or his son or daughter, whomever you mentioned, were to sell that property, then that right-of-way is gonna have to go with the deed for that property, correct?
Correct. It'll stay with the Parcel B, the existing house, so that, yes, if his son and daughter-in-law sell the house, the existing house, it would stay so he could have the right to access his new house. Zoning is 60,000 square feet with 175 feet of frontage, so it does comply with zoning in that aspect.
Questions from the board?
Mark, the property, I suspect to the south of this says Timothy and Ann O'Connor?
Yes.
That's open space, correct? There's no buildings on that? Is that right?
No, there is. Actually, their house is located up near the roadway, and then there's a barn located back in here. The rest of it, yeah, is large open space for the O'Connor piece, yes.
I bring that up because the O'Connors attended, no, it's not probably relevant, but just as an aside here, but they attended the neighborhood outreach programs that were held in early 2019, interested in, you know, conservation of their open space. It's probably not relevant at all. I mean, if this is property that's owned by the Wmetts and it meets compliance, then that's fine.
Yes, correct, yeah, right. And the Wmetts property is now in 61.
Okay.
Paul, Keith, Dan?
Yeah, I don't think there's really any comment. I think that another method or reason for doing this, it may allow for another parcel or lot to be placed in, in that seven acres in the future. I mean, that could be part of the motivation too, but it doesn't really matter.
Well, that's a good question. Is there enough frontage for any additional building? There isn't, is there?
No, there's not. No, there's not. So this is, this is the maximum number of lots that could be obtained on this piece of property under current zoning.
Right.
Oh, okay, I thought it was 140.
No, this is our, our zone.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So it's, it's 175 feet.
Oh, thank you. I'm learning more.
Okay, without, if there's no further questions, do I have a motion to accept the A and R presented by Mark Reed for Tom Wmet at 24 Pleasant Street?
Our motion to endorse the A and R is presented.
Second.
Motion made by Keith and seconded by Paul. I'll take a roll call vote. Keith, yes?
Yes, aye.
Paul?
We, I mean, yes.
Cindy?
What, are we French?
Hi, hi, Japanese, hi.
Dan?
Yes.
Paul, yes. So, passed unanimously, and also now we'll get a, you're requesting that the new lot, Parcel A, correct, Mark? Will be number, Parcel A will be number 24?
Correct.
And you, you'd like to change Parcel B to 22?
Correct. And then that keeps sequential street numbers going along Pleasant Street.
Very good. I don't think, is everybody in agreement on that? I don't think we need a motion to change that number, or do we? If you wanna be politically correct, I guess we should take a motion and change.
I move to change the numbers as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Dan?
We?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Paul, yes. Right, Mark, thank you, that's, that's great. I'll sign those and drop them off at your office.
Okay.
You're, you're there Friday, too?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
That's great, and have a great holiday season if I don't speak to one of you again. I know I'll speak to Dan next week. Goodnight.
Do you anticipate anything, Mark, coming up for the 16th at all?
No, I do not have anything, Paul.
All right. Thank you.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, now. The second agenda item, there's a continuation of a public hearing for Greg Felton on a stormwater residential permit, 32 High Street, however, received another communication from Mr. Felton two days ago stating that the plans still haven't been rectified, and he has hired another engineer who sent a communication to me late this afternoon, which I copied the board on, who will be getting things ready. So tentatively, I've scheduled that meeting for January 6th, and I told Mr. Felton that should give him adequate time, because I'm not gonna keep on doing this every two weeks and have him continue, so I wanted him to confirm with me a week before, so I don't have to keep on changing this agenda. So right now, it's January 6th. And the only other thing I'll say about the site that you, you received, again, copies from an email that the Highway Superintendent sent Mr. Felton about the mess that was created up there after this last rain event, and it was quite a mess, you looked at the pictures, It causes great anxiety for the Highway Department, it causes me great anxiety to even look at it sometimes, knowing what's going on up there, but anyway.
Sorry, so I have a question with this. I was looking over the bylaws, especially the stormwater bylaw, section of the bylaws, section 14, where it gets into enforcement and penalties. Given the period of time that he's had and, and the violations that have occurred, is, is the planning board in a place where we can issue a notice of violation to him, such that we will start to see some progress and a path forward to him completing this project?
Well, right now, to my knowledge, the building inspector has, you know, got a cease and desist on any type of building up there. I'm not in favor of us. It's not, I don't think our purview to be issuing citations or anything.
Well, it's written on bylaws.
Yeah, but we're not an enforcement agency, so to speak. If there was anything to come of that, I would expect it would be the Building Department Office. But since there's a plan that has been filed, and I think the only area that I would be concerned is how much time he's gonna be putting off continuing, and then perhaps I might recommend that we take some sort of action through the building inspector, but since he's got a plan in place, he filed the permit, hopefully this will be rectified with his new engineer, January 6th, and if it isn't, I guess we'll have to then discuss any other route we wanna take going forward. Maybe I'll have a comment on that.
Well, my, my comment is my usual silly question. Given the storm that we had recently and the fact that an unacceptable amount of, you know, dirt rode down into the public highway, public road, how do we know that that isn't gonna, you know, happen again this winter? And I believe I understood from his emails that he's really not authorized to go ahead and do the paving of his road, and it just seems to me that could be a repeat incident, maybe more than once. It also went into a neighbor's property. What is the recourse there? I mean, is it 100% up to the building inspector? What can they do? What is our responsibility here?
So I feel like there's actually, you know, we're a piece of the puzzle here. We're not the only ones that are looking to approve his site work. I guess there is a element that is on the Conservation Commission's approval as well, because there's, there's jurisdictional impact that is on the, on the stream side that is within their purview. So I think he's got to see the Conservation Commission Board, in addition to our, our board, to get, and I don't know if the word is wholesale approval, but there's, there's two components that need to be addressed based on what, what we have and the Conservation Commission has for oversight.
I, I would say that the stormwater is all within the planning board's purview, and the problem we're seeing with the, the erosion is, is under, an issue was due to stormwater, right, and his lack of control. Stormwater caused by the removal of more than 40,000, 40,000 square feet of trees. So I would say that the, 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 there is, there's, there's an action, the action to stop the erosion is on the planning board.
Yeah, which he's in the process of finding, he's finding, so what, what measures, anybody got any ideas?
So if I'm, if I'm, if I'm his engineer on this, right, this is, and if this was my property, this is the way that I would be looking at this, is that he's hiring somebody to come up with a plan that not only gets approved by us, but also gets approved by the Conservation Commission. That's my understanding. So if he's constructing improvements or modifications to his site, he's not gonna do one piecemeal approval that is just for the Conservation Commission, because if you look at his entire site, everything is connected. I mean, he's got, you know, disturbance that's gonna be related to the driveway that's in their purview, and then there's obviously driveway and 40,000 square foot disturbance that's in our purview. So, you know, we have a bit of a, you know, first-time situation here as a board, where as a, as a disturbance, it's, it's overlapping with the Conservation Commission as well. So, you know, the element that I suggest as a board is, you know, God knows when this is gonna get finished, because, you know, we'll approve it, and you're not gonna be able to open up and pave his road until the spring, because the asphalt plants will be closed. So what I'm getting at is, I think there needs to be some sort of relief for mitigation at a temporary basis to slow down the water, because right now, with the erosion that's happening on the driveway, he's gotta somewhat put some riprap on the side of the road or on the side of the driveway to slow the water down, so it's not, you know, accelerating as it's going down his driveway and preventing washout. I think, you know, rather than just jumping on and saying, oh, okay, get, get a plan to us, I think we need to have a interim mitigation plan that identifies how are we gonna stop the water in the meantime, because obviously, well, he's not gonna be able to get a complete site until the spring.
I would like to mention that his original plan did not call for paving, something to point out. And this is a, the, the fact that now that he wants to pave is, is, is a new, is new than what he had originally proposed. Not, not that it matters, but, you know, I agree completely with what you're saying, Paul. We need, we need, we need a solution to the, 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 a temporary solution to stop the runoff into the road, which is gonna keep happening until, until an engineer evaluates the situation and comes up with a long-term approach.
Keith, you got any thoughts on that?
No, I'm just wondering if it's within the Highway Superintendent's authority to, you know, even, even go out and place hay bales and silt fence immediately at the end of that driveway? And then would the town have the ability to assess a lien on Mr. Felton's property to pay for the cost of that work? But I agree, there needs to be an immediate, short-term solution to prevent this from happening. I just looked at the pictures that you sent today, Paul. I mean, the fact that it is, you know, created a one-foot washout in the roadway and now expanded into neighboring property's yard, to me, is unacceptable. And frankly, if I were Mr. Felton, I would've gone out and put hay bales at the end of the driveway myself, irregardless of the cease and desist order. I mean, this is shameful, in my opinion, absolutely shameful.
So would you like me to send a communication off if somebody makes a motion suggesting to the Highway Superintendent to, that we recommend some sort of mitigation in conjunction with his department, and convey that through Mr. Felton?
I think that we should probably, to build on what you're saying, is, if I'm Randall, I probably don't wanna have any additional responsibility to be handling and working on somebody else's property. My recommendation would be to have Mr. Felton provide a, 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 an immediate mitigation measure to slow the water down and prevent erosion to the satisfaction of Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent.
Pardon me, ma'am, this is Janet, I've been quiet. I totally agree that, that Mr. Felton should take care of this project. I don't think it's Randall's problem. I think that's shameful, and someone went over there in the last two days with a bucket loader or a Becco or something, and kinda leveled out all the ruts and everything that the water damage caused. We have bought the property on two sides, and so I feel very concerned that he continues to violate his cease and desist orders, and I guess he's living up there too. And I don't think it's Randall's, and Randall is so busy and has so many things to deal with, I don't think it's his problem to put the hay bales, I think it's Mr. Felton's.
No, I, I agree, but I just wanna make sure that it's in concert with, with Randall, and, and he, he guides this person on what he feels should be done to, to mitigate that situation.
I agree.
So if, would someone then make a motion that I send off an email to Randall, to, or Mr. Felton, and I'll copy Randall on it?
I, I move that you communicate directly with Mr. Felton, copy Randall, our Highway Superintendent, advising immediate mitigation of the situation. If you wanna make specific suggestions about hay bales or whatever it is required, but this has to not happen again. It's damaging to the public road and damaging to neighbors' properties.
Can you define immediate?
Within the next seven days.
If I, if I may propose to add to that, it, it's, it's to Randall's approval.
To Randall's approval, to our Highway Superintendent's approval.
Travis, second on that?
I'll second.
Motion is made by Cindy and seconded by Keith. Cindy, yes?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Paul, yes.
Paul, before you go off this topic, I, I do recognize a couple members of the Conservation Commission here, in addition to Dan Lavalley, and I, I wonder if they wanna add anything to this. This is a multi-committee, multi-board, and multi-employee issue, and I just wanna make sure we've addressed ways that they can work in concert with this whole problem. I don't know if Marla or Joy wanna add anything.
I can add something on their behalf. Oh, Marla, go ahead.
Hi. I wanted to make it clear that this property has been in this state for at least a year and a half. It just has depended on the amount of rain on any given day. Last year, we issued an enforcement order that by October last year, he was supposed to have a plan in place to address this and to replant. Again, our jurisdiction is only within 100 feet of the wetlands there, not the end of the driveway. And as Dan had mentioned earlier, the permit that we issued was to cut down a few saplings along the edge of the gravel driveway, which was supposed to remain as such. So now, suggesting we need to quickly permit a paved driveway, he has to file all new permits, and again, he was supposed to have done that by October 2019. We issued another enforcement order this year, which was supposed to, in conversations with him, to say he needed the stormwater permit from you to build the notice of intent for us, because as Paul Fergel had indicated earlier, it's the same property that you need to have the plans layered on each other. He did, so in April, we told him to try to get on your May and June agenda. Well, here we are in December, this is not done yet. It's very challenging, and when we did go there this summer, or I should say in April, we found even more violations, not your problem, but that's where we found even more was cleared than we had understood. So it's not a matter of the Conservation Commission is holding the project up. They went outside of what was permitted from the Conservation Commission and never got the permits that they needed from you. And I guess our big Conservation Commission thing is water flows downhill. I'm done.
Thanks, Marla.
Yeah, Paul, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add one more thing. I've driven by there myself, and I've seen a, a mobile home-style trailer with, I know that's not the jurisdiction of the planning board, but I, I do think we have to acknowledge that, you know, it's there, it's evident if you drive down Route 10. You just have to look up the hill and see it, and you don't have to go up High Street to see it. And I don't know if the building inspector has been notified of that, and whether it's consistent with our zoning bylaws, whether there's been a, any kind of approval granted, whether he is in fact residing there. It's, I don't, it's concerning, because this gentleman seems to think that the guidelines, the bylaws, et cetera, perhaps don't apply to him. I don't know what to say, but...
I've heard that, I've heard that about three times now, and again, if, the concern has gotta go over to Mr. Lauren. He, he does the enforcing, and that's his, that's his, that's his job.
But someone needs to tell him that the mobile home is there.
Yeah, I believe we're looking for, say, a neighbor to notify him.
I tried today, but he has difficult office hours and was not able to talk with him.
So Janet, in my background, I dealt with attorneys, and I was told if it's not in writing, it doesn't happen. So you just might wanna put a letter in the, in the mail and keep a photocopy of it and make sure that that's a documentation as a neighbor. That's just one consideration, yeah.
Thank you, Cindy. I, his office hours are six in the morning to 11:00, so I plan to call him tomorrow morning around 6:30.
Good for you.
And talk with him first.
I believe he's out because he's quarantined.
Oh, and no one's taking his calls? Hmm, okay, I'll try. I can talk to Art maybe and find out more. Thank you.
Hi, this is Joy Piper, member of the Southampton Conservation Commission. Did we not speak to Mr. Felton about the trailer before? Am I imagining that?
Yes, and the trailer was removed, and this is a new trailer.
Oh, which comes and goes. It's sometimes it's there and sometimes it's not.
The trailer is not under the Conservation Commission's purview, but it's under the Board of Health and the building inspector, and on a number of occasions, it has been deemed inappropriate, and he was told to remove it. deemed inappropriate, and he was told to remove it.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, folks, stay tuned. We'll revisit this again, I'm sure. I'm gonna take the MS4 stormwater out of order just for a moment, because I was over to Town Hall last week in between our two meetings here, and there was a building permit that was submitted by David Gartska for Lot 2 on Pitch Farm Way, and it was under 35,000 square feet, somewhere in the vicinity of 34.5. So I signed off on that, so it wouldn't be held up for another week or two. So I'd ask for a motion to approve that building permit.
I move to approve the building permit you signed for Mr. Gartska.
I'll second.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Paul, yes. Thank you. And then one other communication that I received, I think I forwarded to you people, but John Furman got in touch with the construction guy for Gil Farm, and they still have not done any paving. And he asked the guy for a date, because it's getting late. So here we extended that request on theirs, and I don't know, do you want me to send something off to these folks or what? Paul, what, and Keith, I know there's a time limit here when it comes to the weather. What, what's the next move?
Depends on the temperatures and depends on if batch plants are open or not. Ahead at the long range, what do we have for temperatures?
So what are they asking from us?
Remember the last, two weeks ago, they asked for an extension on the paving, because they didn't make the deadline date of November 13th?
So that was, so what's the sunset now?
And according to their attorney and who else was representing them that night, they said it was going to take place that following week, would have been the week of November 15th, and John just sent them off an email two days ago, and it still hadn't been paved yet.
So did we have, did our motion require it to be done by a certain date?
Wait, I don't believe, I don't think we put a, a time limit on it, because they said they were going to do it next to the following week.
I, I still think we carry the same idea with, with what we said before. I don't think it changes what we said. As long as the temperatures are above 40 degrees and rising, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, it said, our notes said if they couldn't do it by November 20th to notify us. So John obviously was on top of that, and it was even beyond the 20th, to be quite honest with you. So, you want to still just hold on it?
Well, I guess my concern is, and I, I would need to check the MS DOT specifications regarding ambient conditions, because, you know, looking at the long-range forecast, the overnight lows are into the 20s. So, you know, it's going to present that, that existing base course that is out there now is going to be, in theory, 20 degrees. So, again, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the MS DOT specs regarding paving to understand if there's a requirement to have the surface that you are placing hot mix asphalt on to be a certain temperature as well.
Yeah, so it, I just, just sent out two engineers yesterday and today, or actually today, to observe asphalt application, and the temperature needs to be 40 degrees and rising. That's the DOT spec on the...
That is nothing to do, that there's no regard for surface temperature?
No, that's 40 degrees pavement temperature. So typically, the pavement temperature or the ground temperature usually, you know, gets a little higher before ambient, based on, based on solar reflection.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, probably, want me to leave it in John's hands if he's got a problem, or do I, you want me to send off an email to him to say that as far as the temperature is 40 degrees or higher?
And rising.
And rising, yeah. Okay, will do. Okay, now to the proverbial MS4 stormwater. And quite frankly, I'd like someone else to take the lead on this, because I'm exasperated with it. It's kind of overwhelming, all this, and how we want to handle it, because it's a, it's a big document. I don't think it needs page-by-page review, or how you want to handle it, but keep in mind, too, that it's going to come up again at a public hearing. So is there anything, I guess, that we need to edit on the existing document as far as, I'm thinking of the Southampton Planning Board's responsibilities, more, more or less, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but all the other technical stuff has been drawn up by other state standards or engineers or whatever else. So I, I kind of take their word for, for all of that mumbo jumbo in between, but I defer to whoever else wants to...
Can I make a proposal to, to share in the fun here? So I'm prepared to share the screen with the draft. I'm going to repeat my disclaimer, I am not an expert in this, but I do remember there were several, several issues that I couldn't answer when I went through these committee meetings. So what I'd like to propose is that we share the screen on the draft right now, and the first one is going to be the bylaw. And I'm going to go kind of quickly on this, and I know Dan sent an email that represents that he had, had a chance to read it. I'm suspecting that some of the rest of you did as well. But I'm going to go specifically to page 11. Some of this is pretty straightforward. If you've read it and you want to add anything, stop me. The things on the right here, Athena and Patty are the same person, and that's because Patty's computer calls herself Athena sometimes, and she, and it calls her Patty other times. So they're the same persons. So the, actually, the first one right here is this question of authority, and this came up over and over again, and how apropos, because here we are facing a pretty significant stormwater issue with a, with a local resident. I've got to diminish here so I can read this. Okay. So when there is non-compliance, it, it says right here that, and I told them this, from what I understood of our responsibilities, that when there's non-compliance, we delegate it to the building inspector. Is this correct? So that's the first thing to, to raise a question about.
Yeah, I've always understood that the building inspector's role is as the enforcement officer for the planning board.
Okay. Well, bear that in mind, Keith, because as we go through, there's other spots where it sort of implies, in my opinion, that the planning board is the authority.
Or agent, or, or we can designate an agent. That's the key point, important word here, is that we can designate who our agent is. So in some cases, it could be a building inspector. In some cases, we can hire John Furman's company to be that agent. In some cases, it could be a town employee. So I think the way that it's written, I, I would recommend we accept that.
You know, I, I have a different opinion on this, just from, in some towns, stormwater's under the Conservation Commission, and under the Conservation Commission, they would be the enforcement agent themselves, and they would enforce it through the mass general law. So it's, I guess it's every, some towns decide it's planning board, some towns decide it's under CONCOM, but it, 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 it just seems, it seems strange to me that, that the planning board doesn't take any, any enforcement, doesn't have any enforcement authority of itself. It doesn't do any of its own enforcement.
Well, that's other towns, Dan, but are we all in agreement with what Paul just said about this particular paragraph, this two sentences representing what we expect is the case in Southampton?
Well, I'm saying that I think the planning board should have enforcement authority. That's my opinion.
I'm going to go back to this, then. Do you like the way it's written under this in the bylaw draft? "The Southampton Planning Board will serve as the stormwater authority and shall administer, implement, and enforce this bylaw. Any powers granted to or duties imposed upon the planning board may be delegated in writing by the planning board to its employees or agents or to the Southampton Highway Department." So it sort of states specifically that we are the authority, but we can delegate.
Yeah, I also, I mean, if I look, looking at other towns, again, the way they handle that is, they, they, like, if we look at our bylaw for stormwater, you have the ability to fine, and that's under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Paragraph 21D, and you may want to add that, but that's, you know, this is a group decision, right? So that's, that's the way I would, I would see it, but, you know.
I think, Dan, to be quite honest with you, and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, with you guys spending so much time on that, Patty and PVP C would have been, they'd have been quick to include the conservation on it if they thought it was pertinent to them, correct? But you don't see it mentioned, so I'm, I'm judging that it's not so.
Well, she wasn't telling us how to do it. She was sort of building upon what was already in place and adding in any Massachusetts guidelines that were, you know, updated since the original bylaw is written.
I think for us to start including conservation and, and, and other components, it's going to get muddy in Messy.
Of course.
I, I think we're going to have to get this whole amendment or this whole draft bylaw rewritten in its entirety, if we even put that into the first, the second page here. I, I suggest we just keep it and move on, because this is, this is, this is something that the board's been in charge of, and now it's going to add additional confusion if we start parsing out.
You guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I just have trouble with that, enforce this bylaw. This committee, in my mind, is not an enforcement body. We are the permit granting and administer implement, but enforcing this gets me, because this is not a paid town department to oversee this type of administration, and I, I want to know what you think on that.
I mean, it says, it says, we may delegate. It says clearly, that's a delegation that we can say that enforcement's can be done by the building inspector.
Well, if that's the case, then it probably should be defined as that.
Well, it says that. It says this, "Any powers granted to or duties imposed upon the planning board may be delegated in writing by the planning board to its employees or agents or to the Southampton Highway Department."
Why can't it be more clearer than that, though, and explicit?
What would you say, Paul, Paul Forgot, I mean, Paul Demon?
I would, I would just say, "The duties imposed upon the planning board may be delegated in writing to, to the building inspector and the Southampton Highway Department."
Well, this is a critical question, has to be, has to be determined, because this is not the only place this shows up. In the regulations portion, it also states that the planning board is the authority, and this is critical, because if a town resident or a, or a, you know, somebody with a gripe has, that needs to know who to go to, and as, and we've noted in the past, they, they come to the planning board.
Well, they come to the planning board for everything, because they, they don't get a, a, a call answered in some of the town departments, and they get on the website, and they don't know where to start for anything, and that's why I get emails and phone calls, because nobody knows where to turn. But if, in my mind, if we restate it at the outset, if the building inspector by the enforcement agent is going to be on, in all these paragraphs, it should be consistent all throughout, is that, that department should be written on it all throughout where this comes up.
I think that makes sense.
Well, that means a lot of rewriting. It's okay if that's what the, if that's what the planning board thinks.
All you're doing is putting in the building inspector. You're putting in two words.
Paul, I think, just hold on. I, I think this very first section is under the authority, which implements, which defines the entire document, okay? This is the, to me, I'm no lawyer, I'm no, you know, contracts or bylaw writer by any means, but to me, this is the section that defines the role of the planning board, correct? And I think the fact that this is front and center of the very, you know, one of the very few first things you read, it identifies clearly that we have the power to delegate, delegate as, as, as we see fit. So the easiest thing, rather than getting, you know, tripped up with subsequent sections, we identify the authority of the board being the one that delegates enforcement, right? We can say that. We can add, you know, we delegate to the building inspector or other agents or Southampton Highway Department. And that, and that takes care of the entire document in, in kind.
Yeah, I think we had, we have a great example tonight, right, of how we're handling the enforcement, and we're delegating it, right? So that seems to be the, the process that we want, we would like to follow and going, and use going forward. And I think that's good to put that in writing here, because I look at the bylaw, I looked at the bylaw before this meeting for stormwater, and it says, "We are the, the planning board is the enforcement agency." So that clarifies it to what we want it to be. We don't, we don't want the planning board to be the enforcement agent. We want to delegate that authority.
So, Dan, I'm going to correct you. We're not the enforcement agency, we're the authority. There's a difference. We are the authority, and that's what this says. "We shall administer, implement, and enforce the bylaw as the authority," and we delegate, and it says "may be delegated in writing." So, to me, Paul Demon, this gives us some leeway. It gives, it, it says that we can make, take action based on how, what is presented to the planning board. And we are a volunteer group.
We have no employees either, as it states there.
Yep.
Since employees are agents, we have no employees. I don't, if, you want to leave it the way it is, go, go for it.
But, but I think we have to be sensitive to the fact that the chairperson of the planning board gets hit, because I've been seeing all these emails, gets hit, what, a dozen times a week with questions and with issues, and, and, and you're, and you're stuck with trying to figure out what to do with them outside of the meeting. And I think we need to be sensitive to that fact. We don't have...
All I'll do is, in, in my time, looking at the authority here, is I will, I will delegate it, or I'll just pass the buck on it.
Hey, Paul, this is John Martin. You mind if I make a comment?
Go ahead.
A couple of things. This is a bylaw, so whatever you put in here, you're not going to be able to change easily. And in my experience with contracts like this, this allows you a lot of options, where if you put in highway and building inspector into... a lot of options where if you put in highway and building inspector into a bylaw, you can't veer from that at all. So my thought would be if you keep this in the bylaw and then you come up with a policy that all of these inquiries go to the building inspector, I think the policy you can change as you need to, but you wouldn't be affecting the bylaw, which gives you overall authority.
Good point, John. Thank you.
And John, we haven't talked about regulations. Would regulations sort of follow with what you're talking about as policy? If we had regulations that specified, you know, the various options available whenever an issue arises? Is that consistent with what you're asking, John?
As long as the regulations don't have to go before another board or through the town meeting, you can change them as needed. But the bylaws, you need to get approval process to change these. And if you need to change them in the future for a special reason, you can't if you just have the building inspector and the highway department. This way you can. It gives you all the options that you want. You can kind of play with it as you go along on the situation.
So this has a lot of options. It includes employees, which we don't have, maybe in the future, agents, like a hired agent, South Hampton Highway Department.
Right. And your agent could be the building commissioner in this case, or an employee of the town. So I think you have all those options in there without specifically writing those two names in there.
One, one question. How can we, how can we delegate to a group, um, without their consent or don't we have to have their agreement on this to say, you know, they will accept that responsibility, you know?
If we, if we hire John Furman at VHB, he's not going to argue.
True.
Perhaps the word then that, that's, uh, since John brought that up, you see the word delegated. Should it be maybe referred to instead of delegated to? We, I, I don't know if we have the power to delegate, but we do have the power to, to refer things out.
Well, delegating it, if you, you could go to the select board or the town administrator telling him that you would like to delegate it to the building commissioner and either the board or the town administrator could then delegate it. So, yeah, your wording is delegating is probably not the best word, but I, I think it works if you need to have it delegated to a building commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'll just insert that as a question, okay? Delegated or referred to?
All right, you're gonna, let's move on Cindy.
Let's keep going. All right. Most of this is, in my opinion, not something that needs to be discussed tonight. It's, a lot of this is consistent with what was, um, in mass regulations, et cetera.
That's all definitions, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going best I can here.
I apologize. I have to leave for another meeting. Um, have, have a nice night, everyone.
Thank you, Dan, and good luck. Good luck to your, uh, your, uh.
Little brother?
Little brother, yes.
Uh, thank you, sir. Good night.
Thank you, Dan. Yep. So, um, so Patty raised the issue that some of this should be reviewed by council. It seems to me if we put any bylaw forward, it's automatic process that would, before it goes to town meeting, it does go to council. Is that correct, John? John Martin, is he still here?
Yeah, I'm here. I just was on mute. Yeah, if you've got to change in the bylaws, we normally send it to legal counsel, uh, just to make sure it's okay before we get a vote on it and it's incorrect. That happened a few years ago and it caused a bunch of problems.
Okay, great. So there really isn't an issue here. Um, and then moving along. Uh, sorry, this is not moving so quickly. Um, so this is not in the existing zoning bylaw and she felt the need to sort of organize some of this. It's, it is somewhat administrative. I don't know if you want me to go through this, but I, I, if you haven't, you and Keith and Paul and Paul haven't had a chance to read this, just, you know, make sure you don't have any issues with it. I, I feel very strongly that it would be helpful if you read it to be sure I didn't miss anything. Um, another note to council, and this is a big one right here on page 11. This is under section F. And, um, am I correct that the planning board issues a certificate of completion and that signals to the building inspector to issue the, um, what is it, CO, something of occupancy? What's that stand for, condition? What is it?
Certificate of occupancy.
Oh, certificate of, there it is, certificate of occupancy. Is this correct?
Well, right now, once the decision is, uh, our decision is finalized on stormwater and sent to the clerk, uh, that's the final decision and that serves in my mind as the, requirement has been met for the stormwater and for him to proceed in any way he needs to.
Okay, so this is correct. Is this the way written? Is this correct? Certificates of occupancy will not be granted until corrections of all stormwater practices have been made and accepted by the planning board and other parties. And then, once that's submitted to the clerk, then the building inspector can go ahead and do that and, and allow the certificate of occupancy. Would you, would you rephrase it in any way?
Well, we're, we're approving the permit, which is part of the practices, but I don't know if you want to put permit in there. I'm, I'm not, doesn't matter to me, but we issue the permit that is part of, that, you know, encompasses the practices.
I, I think, um, the word, the key word here is practices which go beyond, um, the permit's intention, meaning that if there's a violation of a permit's conditions, then we don't have to release the CO.
Okay.
Does that mean you like it the way it's written, Paul?
Yeah, let it go.
I, I think it's meant to practice the way it's written.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna, um, stop share and I'm going to go to another one. And that's the, uh, regulations. And this probably won't take very long. Um.
Uh, Cindy, just go back a minute on that.
On the bylaw?
No, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'll, I'll stop you when you get to section F because I had a couple of notes on F and G and I.
Are you talking about the regulations, Paul?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll keep going down and you can stop me. So you can see the first thing is just kind of administrative. Once we decide what we like in the purpose and authority in the bylaw, then that will be put into the regulations. And then moving on. All kinds of definitions here. Again, this will come out of the bylaw. So this came out of the MEP handbook, maximum extent practicable. She's just saying where she got it. So where do you want me to stop? At F, you said?
Uh, I, yeah, unless somebody needs to stop before then. All right, F, um.
This is.
F number, line number eight or paragraph eight.
Did I pass it?
Uh, no, keep going. No, you didn't. Because you're at three. Keep going.
This is F, so you want which?
Oh, refer to Patty's notes if you need to as, before you get there. I'm looking for paragraph eight, so keep going.
Okay. Okay, so I don't think these are issues right here.
Okay.
This is, this is one of them right here. Um, under pre-application and concept planning, she said there should be a checklist that identifies items that will be helpful for the preliminary meeting and may help streamline the permitting process overall. Is there such a thing as the current checklist?
Not to my knowledge.
Should there be and what, who prepares it and what should be on it?
Good question.
I, I think that's, um, that's something we can, uh, have maybe Larry create it, uh, in terms of reviewing what our, um, requirements are and having that as, as, as items to be executed. I think why I'm suggesting Larry is because he's been involved in a lot of these pre-development meetings with various, um, town agencies, which he already probably has that list made when he goes through certain components.
I, I think that would be immensely helpful because it sounds to me like we're dealing with people, yeah, sometimes we're dealing with engineers, but sometimes we're dealing with just a combination of people that have all levels of expertise. So if there's a checklist that includes dates when they comply, et cetera, that, that makes sense. I'm, I'm in favor of asking Larry to create that checklist.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. Um, now this one is one that I didn't know an answer to. Um, filing application. And it says right here that I didn't know about the application for waiver. How is this handled? Uh, let me push this up a little bit here. The site owner has his or her agents submit a stormwater management permit application or an application for waiver for review and approval for any proposed development specified in C of these regulations. So do we have anything? How, is there any, when does a waiver apply and what do I, how there?
So typically when, when, when a waiver is issued or requested, it's usually a letter that, uh.
Yes, it's, it's. It's no, yeah, you're right, Paul. It's, it's always been by letter. There's been, there's no formalized form for the waiver.
So you, you, I mean, it's, because waivers could be infinite in terms of what, what they're looking for. Usually you, uh, ask for a waiver and with the waiver, you identify why you're looking for relief of some sort. So it's, it's, uh, it's just a letter form that the applicant produces.
So that we don't have any form for it? It's just a, a letter, a narrative?
Correct. And, and that's what consultants always do. It's always a letter. It's never a predetermined form.
So would you change the wording at all, Paul Forgot, on this? Or is it, is it fine?
I think it's fine.
Uh, uh, should we insert application or letter?
No, it's legally understood. It's.
Okay. Okay, fine.
Or practice, and, you know, in the practice, it's understood.
Okay. And then, then this came up. Ed was in all these meetings and the question is, um, so does the application go to the town clerk for a date stamp? That seemed to be a big.
It does. Because we have to have a public hearing on it, so she has to stamp it in so the clock gets running on the hearing.
I'm the clerk. It'd be nice if I could spell, you know? Okay. Is that right? Okay. Moving on. Did I go to the section you wanted yet or not?
No, keep going, but.
Oh, this is important. There's apparently two applications forms on the planning board website. Do you know about?
Yeah, once for, and you guys can correct me on that one or enlighten me after all these years. There's one for erosion and sediment control and one for stormwater. It seems to be redundant.
So I remember, I remember Larry mentioning, well, gee, some, some months ago, many months ago, that he was going to do some revisions of those kinds of applications. Should we ask him to, you know, just come up with one and combine the two?
I think so.
Okay, so I, I, do we need a motion for that or just, can we do that with Larry?
Well, no, we don't need a motion. I think we just, we just wrote that in, into this to combine.
You know what I think happened on that, to be quite honest with you, is that there was a form that was originally, um, designed and it was just never, um, deleted after the bylaw was rewritten, like section 14 clearly states erosion and sediment control for stormwater management. So that's the proper one. And the other one probably never got, uh, deleted from the, uh, the, the files for applications and it just remained there.
Okay. Well, I, I do know that the town website is under some, um, revision and improvement and upgrade or whatever. Um, somebody's got to follow up on that because, you know, it's confusing if, if there's application, um, drafts that are, we don't really want on there. Um, you have to ask Ed about that. Okay. So this is, the following is from zoning site plan review requirements. From this language, looks like the applicant provides notice for the first planning board meeting and also prior to filing applications with the town clerk. Is this what we really want? This is really administrative and I, but, you know, she kind of got into the weeds to find out what we have and what we need. So what do we do with this? So it's the applicant's responsibility to provide notification to these abutters?
Correct.
And said notice shall be mailed certified no later than the date of that application is filed with the town clerk. And proof must be submitted to the, by the applicant, to the planning board at the public meeting. Those are all things we do right now, right, Paul?
Correct.
Okay. So is this, do we like the way it's stated or do we want to alter this in any way?
Well, the certified, I'm not going to quibble with that. The residential ones, uh, we're sending out first class mail. Um, certified is pretty expensive. We only have done that and abided by that pretty much by subdivisions, um, but not with residential. But I wouldn't alter it at all.
Okay. Okay. This one is, um, so she wonders if this word "this," which is kind of a pronoun, is equal to the project or stormwater management permit for the project, at which time the project and stormwater management per, permit appears as an agenda item? I don't know how important this is. Should we leave it like it is?
Yeah.
I think you got to add the word permit, which this permit appears.
This permit we should insert right here? Okay. Okay. And then, um, now this was important. Said notice shall be mailed certified no later than the date that the application is filed with the town clerk. Was this correct?
That, that isn't necessarily true.
What should, what would be better and more palatable for our purposes?
Well, since the public hearing notification goes out, um, three weeks in advance, it has to be seven days before the meeting and 14 days before. So in effect, that's like three weeks. So the said notice shall be, um, mailed no later than the first, uh, legal, you know, uh, public hearing notice.
Well, isn't that the notice when it's issued to the town clerk? Isn't that the, is that the same thing?
What?
When they file the application, isn't that, isn't that when they, when, uh, isn't that the same thing in terms of when they file?
Well.
When they file with the town clerk, isn't that the official date that, that?
Yeah, but that, all that means is it's, it's on the clock for us to hear it. Yeah, but that, all that means is it's, it's on the clock for us to hear it within. Sixty days or ninety days, whatever the case may be, but it's not necessarily. The time that you need to uh give the abutters notification, because as I say, the legal notice in the paper has to be within. Uh fourteen days prior to the meeting and I've always sent. The abutting notice um in conjunction with that legal publication.
So shall I add, add hearing of public notice within thirteen? Days of what?
Fourteen days of the public hearing.
All right, okay. Okay, so I, I guess we covered that. Non-refundable permit application fee based on the fee structure established by the planning board.
That's right, that's correct.
Okay, and then um. Now, here's a question that I did not know the answer to, obviously. Do, who chooses the consulting engineer for these stormwater issues? Uh, uh, is it the planning board? Do we provide like a list of consulting engineers or do we just say Massachusetts certified engineer?
We have, we have a list. Uh, some, some of the stuff that we do, we consult out, we choose, but. Typically, I guess, uh, the uh. They can, can, they can um. Select from, there's a list on our um. Planning board site that has all the engineers. In fact, I just updated it uh this past early spring, so. They, they can choose from anybody on that list.
But could they go outside that list if it, if there was somebody that wasn't on the list and was a certified Mass- Massachusetts certified engineer? Is that possible?
I, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I, I defer to Keith and Paul on that.
What do you guys think?
We, well, typically, we, it's the, it's the agencies or the boards. Uh, duty or, or I should say, I'm looking for a better word, but typically it's our, our. In our purview to identify three consultants to get a price from if, if uh they're not happy with just. One, because I've seen applicants complain that, you know. That the board selected only one peer reviewer and they were expensive.
Well, this, yeah, but this says, Paul, that the applicant. Shall select a consulting engineer from the planning board's approved list, so they're not, we're not telling them who to select. We're just providing a list. So my question is, can they choose any consulting engineer who is. Massachusetts certified, even if it's not on the list?
No, that's why I'm, I'm making a point for the list.
Oh, okay.
That's right, too, because they could have, they could have uh, there could be some collusion there, correct?
Yeah, kind of like the hunters.
Yeah, right.
So do we like the way it's stated right now or do we want to say anything different?
No, I'd leave it the way it is, right?
Agreed.
Yep.
All right, okay. Uh, okay, moving on. So I'm just gonna put okay here. I think that's all I had on my uh for concerns. Um, so this is the same thing, selected from this, they're calling, she's calling the store, it's, it's a. Interchangeable. Planning board and stormwater authority are interchangeable in this document, so we're providing that approved list of consulting engineers. And uh, this is. Will hold, is this all correct? The planning board should hold a public hearing within sixty-five days of the receipt of the complete application? And take final action within ninety days?
Yeah, and then, in fact, we're already under that with Felton.
Yeah.
He's on the clock with the sixty-five days, so if nothing comes about uh within ninety days. You know, we've got a vote to either extend it or um. Throw it out and have him resubmit.
Okay, so then she put a little note in here, in our zoning bylaws, section G six, which I do not have in front of me, you currently have initial inspection. Prior to approval of any plan. Uh, I think this is fine, the way it's written. Want to change it, anybody?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. And I, I, I don't think there's a whole lot more that I had.
Right, keep going, keep going until you get to number eight. Okay, right there, well, wait a minute.
Yeah, this, I had a, I had a comment on this F eight, project start date.
Okay, what do you want to say?
Well, this says the project shall be, begin within three years after issuance of the stormwater management permit. Um, and I'm trying to read my notes on this here. Um, the subdivision regulations. Okay, so the subdivision regulations indicate that the project needs to be completed within three years. So this is just giving a, a anticipated start date. It doesn't put an end date.
So it probably should coincide with the subdivision, right?
Right, right.
And she, and she, that's good, Keith, because she's got it right here. It doesn't align with the subdivision regs. So what should we say? Shall be completed?
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta change that entire section, so number eight doesn't say project start, it says project end date.
Right.
Okay, so project.
Completion date or whatever you want to use.
Yeah, completion date, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the subdivision regs. Um. The, just to see what it says, okay. So I'll, I'll read it here. So the subdivision. Regulation section is titled completion time schedule. All required improvements. And legal documents shall be completed within a maximum period of three years from the date of endorsement. Of the definitive plan by the planning board. So I don't know if we want to. Copy that, essentially verbatim.
Well, let's say it out loud again, I'll keep it in here.
The title of the section is completion time schedule.
All right, so I'll rephrase this whole thing, okay?
Well, this is also linked back probably to other sections, is it not?
I don't know.
At least, is it in the table of contents?
Let me do this and then we'll go quick up and look at that in a minute, okay? So re- read that again, um Keith?
Yep, it says. All required improvements and legal documents shall be completed.
Well, all right, wait a minute. All required. Improved.
Yeah, I mean, this is where we may want to modify, you know, what this is, but the general gist from the subdivision regulations is that the project. Needs to be completed within a maximum period of three years.
Will be. Completed within a maximum. Of three years, right?
From the date of endorsement.
From the date of. Okay. And then the second sentence has to be altered too, right?
Yes.
The project is not meet its time criteria?
The project is not completed within three years. Blah, blah, blah. Correct?
Is not come. Completed within three years.
Okay.
And then do we want the rest of it? And the planning board, as the approved stormwater management plan is inconsistent with the current site conditions. The applicant shall submit a modified plan? Is this all, do we like the rest of this on there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right, do you want me to go up and look at the table of contents again on this? So let me. Let me see where we are here. What, what? Okay, so that's F. So let me just quickly go back up. So F is permit procedures and requirements. That's fine, isn't it?
Unless completion timeframe is somewhere else in this document, but I don't remember seeing it.
Not as the table of contents.
Right, but I don't know if it's a subsection of another item of the table of contents.
It would be a Ctrl F, look for the word start.
Yeah, we're complete.
Ctrl F?
Yeah.
What do you want me to put in? Start?
Start.
Yeah. Well, I think, I don't think that's gonna show up in start.
Where do you want? Completion?
No, no, we didn't use the word completion until we just started. So the point I'm trying to say is initially.
What? What do you want?
Go back to start again.
Started for construction.
There's a project.
Project start date.
Should I put start date?
Well, you're fine, so go back.
Go back to start?
Yeah, just, just go back to start. And do you see there's, there, there's, there's four sections that are underneath there?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, click on the second one. Wait, hold on.
One, project start date.
Yeah, that's the section we were on.
Yeah.
Prior to starting.
Yeah.
And site erosion. I never knew about Ctrl F, Paul, thanks.
You're welcome.
It wasn't part of my nursing career. I didn't know what to say. Okay, good. Okay, should we go back to looking at this again then?
Do you go back to, go down to G, please?
Um, let me see where we.
We hadn't gotten quite that far. We were almost there.
Okay, is this, I think, page, no, we're not there yet. Page. Okay, we were here. Eleven, this is page eleven. Twelve. Stop me if I'm going too fast. Uh, we ju- we just finished this part.
Yeah, okay, go, keep going, keep going on G, number three.
Okay. Okay, inspection.
Uh, that, yeah, let's see here. Inspection of stormwater management shall be conducted by selected consultant engineer from the planning board's approved list, who shall be professional engineer licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The applicant shall be responsible for paying the cost of all inspections. You guys good with all that? The planning board's approved list, that probably is the same list that we have for peer review?
Maybe we should be, maybe we should insert a, a list and be a little more definitive about what the list is, peer review? Do you want to do that?
Well, you could put from the planning board's approved peer review list, I guess, yeah, to define it. And how do you, uh, Paul and Keith, on the next paragraph there at the, for the pre-bury inspection and final inspection, you good with that language there in the? Final inspection project design engineer shall notify the planning board and highway department as to the date and time?
Yeah, I think this is typical of what we had previously.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I don't know why she bolded this section here.
It, it, it identifies pre-bury inspection and final inspection before things go on the ground. Just uh. What does it say in her? Text or in her comment?
This one here, this just refers to revised given idea for use of peer review consultant for inspections.
So I've, I was always told. That if you have documents, you never bold anything.
Yeah, me too, me too. Yep.
Because it implies that it's more important than o- other. Conditions.
Yep, I agree. I don't know why she bolded it here.
I would not make it bold.
Unbold.
Is that a word? Yes, it is.
It is now.
I, I think so. That's the award of twenty twenty. I mean, it's pandemic and unbold, two things. Okay, we, we good with this whole section here? All inspections report shall include? Do you want me to scroll down a little bit?
Keep going. Uh, what's this one here where she's got a sign off process?
Okay, yeah, that's, she asked about that. I- is there some kind of written report or, you know, sign off? Is it, you know, is it a vote taken at the planning board meeting or do we delegate that to our chair? What do we do?
I, I think it's fine if it's just submitted to the board. I think it's simple. I don't think it needs an action other than them submitting to the board. Uh, it, we don't need any more additional procedures.
Okay, you good with that, Paul?
Yep, go, sure.
Okay, this is just frequency of inspections are here from the EPA's construction general permit. Are we okay with that, I suppose? Terms of this site erosion?
Yep, that's stated, yeah.
Okay, and then. Uh, this is consistent with the MS four permit requirement inspection during best management practices? Okay. This is consistent with best management practices? So she just did some revisions here. This was formerly a standalone section, but seems to work better if we put it under performance standards as resources. So she just kind of read this whole section in. Are you okay with all that? And then, you know, references here to the various websites. I'm going kind of quick here because I don't, I don't think there's anything really. Emotionally provocative, sorry. I'm gonna, you know, email these back to you guys now that you had a chance to look and you can see my uh few inserts here. Um, this is off-site mitigation for standards. Do you want to offer off-site mitigation? I don't know what the hell that means. Take, take it to court? Is that what off-site mitigation is?
No, it means improvements beyond the, the uh, the applicant's own property.
Ah, okay, all right. And this is the same thing. I mean, do we, do we like the way it's written? She's got that highlighted. Okay, so you're, you're gonna have a chance to see this again. And decide, but who, who's talking?
I just had, uh, wanted to see line number twelve, that's all, on this section.
You mean below here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's three. Four. Four. Okay, now this, you know, Randall was made, was present at all these meetings, he said he wanted paper copies as well as electronic copies. Do we want to say number of copies requested here?
No.
It just says one, we don't need to add anymore?
No.
Okay.
One with the digital should be sufficient, I guess.
Well, anybody can make photoc, I mean, you know, hit print five times if they want five copies, right?
Well, in our, in our meetings, in our general meeting, part of the application, they've got to submit, you know, one for each of the board members, plus the highway department.
I don't know where 12 is, Paul, I don't know. You mean 12 in Roman numerals, or what?
Are we on section I or H?
Uh, J, H, uh, we went beyond HI, we went beyond I.
No, I must have made it, no, okay, go ahead, no, never mind.
Never mind?
No.
That's easy. All right, so that's it for, for now, okay? So I'll save this as, let's see here. I'm gonna save this for tonight. 12:20.
All right, thank you for hosting, thank you for hosting that, Cindy.
It was this or cookies, you know, I couldn't give you any cookies.
No, you gave us some cookies already, we had a lot to chew, we had a lot to chew on with this thing.
Yeah, okay, anything else on this, you guys?
So, I just want to know from you all, now that we've looked at that, you wanna, you want me to set a public hearing date for after the first of the year? And get this done?
I can't remember our timeframe, Paul. Do we have a timeframe for meeting criteria? Do you remember any of that, or do I need to double check that?
What do you mean?
Um, we're, I think there's a date to, that we're gonna fall out of compliance if we don't upgrade these, and maybe Randall loses it.
There's not much we can do about it, we can't, we really can't schedule it any time now before January 6, I believe, which is our next meeting in January, that'll give me enough time to get the the legal notice out, and we can, you know, go from there on it. And we can do our part, but then, the official, even if we're, we're still in compliance and you fall out, it still has got to go to town meeting and be accepted, so we're only one, we're only one leg on that journey.
Okay, okay. Can I propose that it, the next, the town hearing, the public hearing, we include an invitation to Randall, to Art Lawrence, to Ed, of course, and,
All the town departments will be notified, yeah.
And also, I don't know if our funding allows it, but to invite Patty to ask, answer questions that certainly are not, I'm not gonna be able to answer.
No, that's fine.
You'll have to pay.
And if she can, I'm sure she'll probably have Ken stand in, right?
Well, she may not, because she's the expert on all this MS4 stuff, she might, I don't know what to say.
Now, oh, I know, she had in her email, which I copied you on, she wanted to know if we were just doing the regulations, or we're doing the how bylaw, we're doing both, correct? Correct?
Don't, well, the answer is yes, but what is required? Do we have to have a public hearing for regulations? Is it, is it necessary, or shall we just do the bylaw?
Well, our, as far as I'm concerned, you know, the bylaw is the main concern. I'm not sure, I'd have to get an, an opinion from Ed Gibson to see if the regulations are, are part of this.
I think that's what drives it. If, if he, if he feels they need to go together, then yes, we do both. If he doesn't, then the question is, do we need a public hearing on both?
All right, I, because Patty sent me the mockup of the hearing, but if it's gonna include the regulations in the bylaw, it's probably gonna have to be edited, but I'll get that confirmed by Ed Gibson.
Okay, good.
I have a general question about the overall proceedings with this regulation slash bylaw. What point would this be reviewed by town council?
After our hearing, Keith, and like John said, before it goes to town meeting.
Okay, so after public hearing, before?
Yes, so if they have any issues with it, they edit it, and that's pretty much what has to be corrected before town meeting.
Before town meeting, okay.
Yeah.
So as far as what we present at a public hearing, we're gonna take all the commentary out, right? We're just gonna have a clean copy of what we can, yeah, okay, I can work on that for you.
And once, once that is complete, would you forward that to me, or have Patty in its, you know, edited form, because that way there, I'll post it on my town government and the, and the website, so people can read it over, anybody that might be interested prior to the meeting or the hearing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it, I, I think we don't have Patty as an ex, as a consultant any longer unless we pay extra time for her. She's, you know, I'll, I'll work on it soon, because it's holiday season.
Right. Well, just, yeah.
Okay.
As long as I have it probably a week before the January 6 meeting.
You'll, you'll get it soon.
Other than that, I, I sent you all minutes, I'm not quite sure, because it's, we've been here for a while. If we want to handle that tonight, because right now, I don't have anything on the agenda coming up for the next meeting on the 16th, and that being said, maybe we can just have a quick meeting that night if nothing else is coming up, and we do the minutes and get it over with.
Yeah, good. I like it.
Do you want to handle minutes tonight, do you?
Nope.
So if you have any, if you read them over in your leisure time, and you've got any corrections or deletions or additions to make on them, do so, and then we'll kind of fly through them at the, at the meeting on the 16th, and get that out of the way. And matter of fact, I'll probably have three more for you, or and then you'll have the full set, maybe right up until to, um, tonight, we'll get them out of the way.
Sounds good.
I have a motion to adjourn, or any other business for that matter.
I'll move to adjourn, I need to get back to work.
Sorry, Keith, thanks for joining us.
Yeah.
Thank you, second, thank you, thanks, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, Cindy.
Everybody, bye.